All right, good morning. I'd like to call this March 5th meeting to order and we'll begin with the roll call.
Suárez Brandall?
Here.
Suárez Mendez?
Here.
Suárez Pacheco?
Here.
Suárez Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
I am here.
All five present, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and those are going to be led by District 2, so I'll turn that over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we're honored to have one of our local pastors here, Matt Markarian. Matt, if you could come up to the podium, please. Pastor Markarian is Fresno County native, serves at facilities and logistics pastor at People's Church, where a decade or so more ago, I played softball in a men's Christian softball league, and he was kind of oversight of that, and I'll tell you, that's a rugged, that's a tough call.
Yes, it is.
I think people miscalculate how intense those can be, but Matt also serves as an executive director at the Fresno Police Chaplaincy, which provides spiritual guidance and resources to those exposed to trauma. And the Fresno Police Chaplaincy hosts the annual Support the Blue Run, which is to support and show appreciation to law enforcement, which we held just a Saturday ago, and Matt and his wife Vanessa oversaw the entire production, and you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I saw you working hard all morning into the afternoon, and so we appreciate you everything that you do for our community. If we could all stand, as Matt leads us in prayer, and then we'll go immediately into the flag salute.
Yes, thank you all for your service, and thank you Supervisor Brandall for inviting me here today. I want to open with a short verse on what inspired today's prayer, and it's Joshua 1:9. "Have I not commanded you, be strong and courageous; do not be frightened and do not be dismayed, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Join me in prayer here. Heavenly Father, I thank you for all that you do. I pray for each and every one of these supervisors, and their staffs, and their families. I pray that you give them the same wisdom and discernment that you gave Joshua to lead his people. I pray that the decisions made in this hall have an impact and an influence that reverberates into our community. We are so thankful that the same God who guided Joshua is that God who is with us here today. Father, we ask for unity among these supervisors, and we ask that they work together harmoniously for the greater good, as we entrust you to lead our wonderful city. We pray all these things to be done in your powerful name. Amen. Join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Any comments, modifications to the agenda from members? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, item number 16 through 49.
And I think I heard that some of our members would like to poll a few items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to poll item number 33 and 44.
Any other members wishing to poll any of the consent agenda items? All right, hearing none. Anyone in the public wishing to comment or poll on any of the consent agenda items? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public portion.
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We'll take Brian's second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
With your approval, Mr. Chairman, we'll take consent items to follow item four.
That's fine.
We'll now move to item number three, under Chairman Magsick, proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month in Fresno County.
And I think we have Lori Wilson here. I see her out in the audience, and if you could step forward with any of your staff members that are here. The Red Cross does amazing work, not just in Fresno County, but, you know, really across the entire United States and around the world, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with our local Red Cross leaders. And so Lori, if you could just share with us a few comments before we approve this resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I would first like to say thank you so much for the recognition, and not of the work that I do, but of the volunteers in our community and across the country that step up every single day. They're the ones in the middle of the night that show up for those home fires, or the ones that set the shelters up when we need it, and they're the ones that, you know, leave their families and their homes to go support and take care of people when they need it the most. I have Jordan, who you all know, who is on our board, so I'm gonna let him actually talk.
Oh, great.
All right, Chairman Supervisors, great to see you as always. Jordan Scott, Board of Directors for the Red Cross Central California Region. And just thank you, echo what Lori said. Thank you for taking time to proclaim this month as Red Cross Month. It's just a wonderful opportunity. Every single year, again, we don't necessarily, we don't recognize the Red Cross as an organization. We want to recognize the people who are on the ground, get the work done, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're ready to roll every time. If I recall, last year, we were kind of hard-pressed to find some volunteers because we were enduring an atmospheric river, record snowfall, shelters being staffed. Just because we don't have that going on right in this moment, our volunteers are training, they're preparing, they are being ready in the community. They are proactively working to make our communities safer as well. I know this month later, later this month in Fresno, we have a Sound the Alarm event where we're going out into communities, high-risk communities, and installing smoke alarms, replacing smoke alarms, checking batteries, just making sure homes are safer and our communities are safer. And that work just does not get done without our 90% volunteer workforce, the boots on the ground, the ones who get out of bed at 2:00 in the morning to make sure a family has all of their immediate emergency needs met following a devastating home fire or whatever the emergency may entail. So, again, thank you for taking time to recognize this month. Your support is incredibly meaningful. It means a lot to our volunteers who would never step up and claim recognition for the work they do. They do it for the passion and the love and the need in the community. So it's great to shine a light on them this month and throughout the year. So thank you all for taking this.
Any comments from board members?
I got a comment.
Yes, please.
I want to, I want to thank you for the outreach that you do to the supervisors during the times that there's emergencies, and, you know, it's really appreciative that when you email all the supervisors and just keep us, keeping us informed, that really means a lot, because a lot of times, we get asked questions ourselves, but it helps us update folks that do call and want to know what's going on, and it gives us also a number to refer, but that's really appreciative. A lot of times, you gotta wait till you see it in the media, of course, but you give us the backstory as well, and the great job that the volunteers do and your staffs are to be commended. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I'll move to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Please step forward to receive this resolution, and we'll get a picture with you as well.
Of course.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two first names.
Sir.
Morning.
Jordan, it's good to see you again, my friend.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good job.
Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
Okay, well, oh, can I use one here?
Yeah.
My face is miserable.
Thank you.
We now move to item number four, under Chairman Magsick, proclaim March 2024 a Social Worker Appreciation Month in Fresno County.
And I think we have Sonia Bougue here, and our Department of Social Services is one of the largest departments. It is the largest department in Fresno County. I think currently, there's about 27 or 2,800 employees, very large budget, and there are a lot of people in Fresno County that receive services from our Department of Social Services. The men and women that make up our Department of Social Services, our social workers and others do a fantastic job, and they are not, they should be appreciated daily. But we set aside one time during the year where we can just say thank you for all the hard work that you do, and I want to turn it over to Sonia now to share some additional words with us.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Sonia Bougue, Director of Social Services, and I agree with you. We should appreciate our staff on a daily basis, and I brought just the fraction of the 2,700 with me. So with me are deputy directors and managers and social worker staff representing multiple programs in social services that serve our families and children and elderly in our community. I'm going to hand this over to a couple of them to share a few things with you, but I want to tell you that I'm honored and appreciate you honoring social workers and recognizing March as a Social Worker Appreciation Month. With me, the social workers on the team are Deanna Jones, Yunice Curiel, you guys wave, Maria Morris, Ruth Johnson, and Yolanda Reyes. And while these are a few social workers here today, they do represent a larger group in our department and multiple programs in our department that really serve a lot of very needy families and kids in our community. And on behalf of our department, I extend my sincerest gratitude to you for acknowledging their invaluable contribution of our social workers that make our Fresno County community. So I'm going to hand it to Maria to start us off.
Good morning. This year's theme of empowering social workers resonates profoundly with extraordinary efforts of our social worker professionals. In the face of complex challenges, they consistently demonstrate resilience, compassion, and a steadfast commitment to advocating for our vulnerable populations. Within our department, we are fortunate to have approximately 512 social workers serving in various capacities. Their tireless efforts touch the lives of thousands of residents receiving services through our department, spanning child welfare services, adult services, in-home supportive services, and the CalWorks CalLearn program. Their dedication and commitment to our community are truly commendable, and we deeply appreciate their involvement.
Good morning. Today, I have the privilege of sharing a brief description of the responsibilities our social workers are charged with. Our child welfare social workers serve our community around the clock, responding to emergencies, investigating reports of abuse and neglect, and providing crucial support to children in care. In 2023 alone, our child welfare services received approximately 19,597 calls and reports, responded to over 7,600 emergency referrals, and supported approximately 2,200 children in care. Our CalLearn program social workers provide intensive case management services to pregnant and parenting teens and their families. Through their efforts, over 1,100 visits were conducted last year, leading to 19 teens obtaining their high school diploma or GED. Our adult social service social workers work tirelessly to ensure the safety and well-being of our vulnerable elderly population. Last year, adult protective services investigated over 3,000 referrals, providing crucial support to elders facing exploitation and abuse. In-home supportive services facilitated independence for over 25,000 individuals, allowing them to remain in their own homes with dignity.
Good morning. So in conclusion, we stand before you with a simple yet profound message. Our social workers embody compassion, resilience, and dedication in their service to the Fresno County community. As we celebrate Social Worker Appreciation Month, we want to recognize our teams' invaluable contributions to our community and the vulnerable population that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from board members? Yes, please, Steve.
I would just like to say, add, thank you for everything that you do in the field of social work. One of my good friends is a social worker. He works in the private side, and whenever we go hang out and go to dinner, I mean, he gets worn down, frustrated. I know it's a tough job, so I want you to know that we appreciate you here at Fresno County. And if there's, you know, ever things that you feel like you need to talk to, I'm an open ear for that. So, thank you.
And I think you also mentioned child protective services is within the umbrella that we're recognizing today. So my wife works in the school system, and I know from time to time, because of her job, she interacts with different social workers that are there to protect kids, and I have to tell you that the work you do in many of the different divisions is very, very difficult and emotional, and I look at just what some of our kids have to endure, and sometimes the brightest light that those kids will see in a given day is you showing up to provide a meal, give them a word of encouragement, and that is extremely valuable. So from my perspective, you are all doing a fantastic job, and I would encourage you to be proud, because I know here, our entire Board of Supervisors is proud of you, so thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Sal.
I also want to thank you for your outstanding work. I know that, you know, caseloads have risen for many of you, just because of the number of employees which have left, which isn't uncommon in any county, that the folks are leaving for other jobs, and you still stick around and manage to get the work done and provide the services for the peoples. So that doesn't go unnoticed, the, you know, the extra work that you've taken on, and so that's really appreciated, and want to thank you for that.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion which I will make in support of this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Please come forward for a picture with us.
under Human Resources, approve addendum to the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for Representation Unit 2, Sheriff's and Probations Personnel, represented by the Fresno County Public Safety Association, effective March 18, 2024.
And Supervisor Brandall, I'll turn it over to you first, maybe to offer up just a few comments, and then we can hear from staff if necessary.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, actually, both of my items are, you know, I pulled them because I need, we need to highlight them. I felt like we need to highlight them a little bit. In this, in this item, this is a MOU with Unit 2, which usually people think of as our corrections officers, but there's other people involved in Unit 2 as well. And so, and it talks about, we're adding a step and giving a percentage of a raise to these folks, but I wanted to connect on, and let the public hear about some of the things that are being done to attract and retain people in our corrections, the challenges that they face there, and maybe Hollis, in our Sheriff's Department, and maybe even our CAO can comment on that.
Certainly. Hollis McGill, Director of Human Resources. So this item is approving a 4% increase along with a sixth step for our correctional officers. Your board has done a tremendous amount of work in increasing the salaries. Over since '22, we had a 5% increase. We had a 2.5% five-year retention. We had another 5% 10-year retention in October of '23. We had a 3% in July of '23, and then a 3% coming in July of '24. So there's been a tremendous amount of work to increase these salaries to attract and retain staff, but if you'd like to go ahead and speak to...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. Steve McComas, Under Sheriff, Fresno County Sheriff's Office. Just a couple of comments on this item. One of the pillars of the Sheriff's Office in providing for public safety is the running of a safe and secure jail, and that's what we, that's one of our, obviously, our missions in keeping criminals off the streets. One of the ways we do that is recruitment and retention of correctional officers. And as you know, over the past several years, we've had difficulty in doing that, based in part for rising salaries across the region in law enforcement, law enforcement jobs. So we've had difficulty in doing that, and we, as you well know, we have a pretty high vacancy rate in the correctional officer series. I'm not going to give the exact number, but it's high, and we struggle to fill that, and we're continuing to struggle to do that, but I think this item, with your support, will go a long way with helping the recruitment and retention and keeping those officers in the jail rather than leaving for other agencies, and will go a long way to making Fresno County a safer place to live. Thank you.
Under Sheriff McComas, before you leave, I was going to ask you, what kind of things do we do in outreach into the community, at schools, or where do we go to try to attract folks that might turn into correctional officers?
Yeah, we have recruitment teams from Sheriff's Office employees, specifically correctional officers, deputies from the jail. We recruit for all different jobs in the Sheriff's Office, but specifically for correctional officer. To staff that, we go out to job fairs, we go to different places. We go up and down the state. Actually, we send people all over to recruit. We go into the schools to start early, to make sure they're aware of the jobs that are available when they graduate high school, when they become 21. Everyone's got to be 21 right now. We do a lot of different things. We're heavy on social media, putting our job applications out on social media. We have a QR code that people who are interested in those jobs can actually scan that QR code, takes them directly to the pages where those jobs are available. So we're constantly involved in the recruitment process to get those people who want to become correctional officers, deputy sheriffs, into the door and get them into those jobs.
And we are having continuous and open recruitments. We test every month, so this is something that we keep very active and vibrant.
Hannah, have you seen these type of, like the MOU and the increase in a step and the percentages of raise that we're giving, starting to make an impact in attracting some new correctional officers and keeping some of the ones that we have?
Yes, absolutely. We've seen a decrease with our retirements.
Yeah, specifically, once, once the associations in Unit 2 and the jail, the associations that work in the jail, once they found out that this item was coming, it's already made an impact. We see a lessening generally March, the end of March is our retirement because of the COLAs and the cost of living increases. We generally see a higher amount of people retiring in March. It's actually significantly decreased. I think I've only seen one or two sergeants in the correctional officer series who are going to retire. That's much lower than years past, so I think just knowing this item is on the board and it has your support, it's already making a difference.
All right, thank you, thank you. Paul, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
I think the Under Sheriff and HR covered it very well. The only comment I would make, and I'll give credit to the Sheriff's Office, that for me, actually touring the jail and talking to our correctional officers was an eye-opener for me. It changed my perspective in understanding what they do and just how important that job is and how difficult that job is, but also having some of our candidates come in to better understand the job they're applying for in the process, and I want to commend both HR and the department, that I think that's making a difference. But what you're doing today, we're hoping will now reap some results in the vacancy rate going down.
Fantastic. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion after we hear from the public.
Perfect. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 33 as recommended.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
We now move to item 44, which was pulled by Suárez Brandall. Under Public Works and Planning, adopt resolution determining that the certain county-owned real property located at 1155 Fifth Street, Clovis, California, is exempt surplus land and is not required for county use, and that certain city-owned real property owned by City of Clovis to be acquired by exchange is required for county use.
Supervisor Brandall.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to highlight this item. This is about a library to be built in Clovis, which is long overdue. When I first became a supervisor five years ago, you pulled me into a meeting that we had in downtown Clovis and wanted me to become aware of what was going on here. I represent a small slice of that, of that city, and you represent exactly where this is going, so I know you've been involved for many years, but I wanted to let the public hear what's happening in the arena of this library to be built in Clovis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bernardi Metis, Department of Public Works and Planning. So this item does represent a property exchange agreement with the City of Clovis. The existing county library is located within Clovis's Civic Center. It's about 9,000 square feet. So today's action, if approved, would exchange that property, give it to the City of Clovis, and in return, the county will receive an approximately one acre parcel in their currently underdeveloped area that will be developed with about a 26,000 square foot new library. So substantial increase in size and services are anticipated for that new location.
Bernard, in best-case scenario from today moving forward, when do you, in best-case scenario, when do you think we could start to see work getting done?
Sure. So, so following today's action, we will open up escrow. There's a maximum 180-day period for doing that. Probably won't take that long, but then thereafter, we are currently in the design. We have preliminary designs of the library. We're in the process of selecting a design builder. We anticipating getting through that process by the end of this year. We anticipate initiating construction in 2025 and completion in mid-2026.
Fantastic. So we're moving forward.
My only comment is, I would like to see that timeline accelerated as much as possible because the residents of Clovis have been waiting for a new library since the first library measure was passed. So I am committed to seeing that through to the very end, but I appreciate staff being here today and bringing this forward, and we are seeing some progress. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion.
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
I'll second. All right, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm going to do something unusual right now because we have representative here for two items that we've already passed on consent, and so what I would like to do is ask for this representative to come forward, but Sal has a few comments that he would like to make. We're not going to revote on items 19 and 20, but we do have proclamations, and I would like to get a picture with representatives here. Item 19, which we already approved, is proclaim Haishar Zoom Day in honor of their 45 years of circulation, and then item 20 is proclaim Armenian Student Organization Day in honor of their 50th anniversary, and I'm going to turn it over to Sal to make some brief comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barlow, would you please come forward to the podium, please? Oh, I guess Barlow left, so, anyway.
I'm so excited.
Yeah, he got, he got excited. The, there's two proclamations that we passed earlier, and they were the proclamations for, as Chairman Magsick stated, the Armenian Student Organization at Fresno State, which celebrated 50 years, and the other one is the Armenian Student Newspaper, Haishar Zoom, which was a 45-year celebration of their, of their existence. So both of these are very important to the Armenian community and our overall community. They'll be having a celebration this weekend, and wanted to make sure that we notate the importance of these two, the newspaper and the, and the students and the class that they have. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Mr. Barlow will be very happy to accept these.
Perfect, and I don't think there's a need to take a picture with that since he is not here, but we'll be sure to get those proclamations to him, and those were approved under consent as well. So I'll turn it back over to our clerk.
We now return to our regular agenda. Item 5, under the Administrative Office, adopt recommended changes to the Fresno County State Legislative Platform. Authorize the chairman to execute letters of support or opposition in accordance with the platform. Authorize the county administrative office to work with the county state legislative delegation, Sacramento lobbyists, and/or other necessary parties to support or oppose legislation in accordance with the platform.
Sam.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Samantha Buck, Deputy CAO. The item before your board is the annual update to the state legislative platform. The platform provides your board with the goals and priorities of your board, and establishes a basis for advocacy at the state level. It was updated with input from our county departments and also our state legislative advocate, Paul Yoder, who is joining us here today. Now, for the format of this presentation, I will provide your board with a high-level overview of the changes. Then you'll have a chance to review those, make any additional changes that you may wish, and then I'll ask that your board adopt with the recommended changes. Once we're through that process, then I will turn the presentation over to Paul Yoder to provide your board with an update on state legislative activities to include budget updates at the state level. Now, working through the platform, the primary changes by section are, under Criminal Justice and Public Protection, we added language to support a comprehensive package of legislation and funding to and funding to combat retail theft around three core pillars of prevention, enforcement, and supervision. Under energy and air quality, we added language to oppose legislation that would undermine the governance of the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District. Under general government and finance, we added language to support legislation and regulatory guidelines that curb theft and subsequent recycling of commercial metals. And this is to assist with addressing the copper wire theft issue in our county. Under public health, mental health, and healthcare services, for consistency with the federal platform, we revised supporting policies of tobacco-free environments to include the reduction of illegal tobacco sales to persons under the age of 21. We also added language to support funding for the development of additional facilities to address mental health and substance use disorder treatment without having to go through a competitive grant process. We also added language to support legislation to regulate unlicensed biological research labs and support local authorities' power to address these labs as a nuisance or health concern. Under social services, we add language to oppose efforts to cut CalWorks' expanded subsidized employment and family stabilization programs. And then under transportation, we add a language to support legislation that gives maintained roads additional weight in gas tax allocations. This concludes my presentation. I'm available should you have questions.
Any questions for Samantha? And I know that Paul is here as well, and I would love to maybe hear from Paul a little bit before we open it up to the public, just to give us a brief update on all the amazing things happening in Sacramento.
What was the adjective? Okay. Good morning, board members. Happy Election Day, everybody. I'm going to touch on a couple of things very, very quickly. Since it is Election Day, a couple of things for us, just looking at the composition of the legislature. There've been, you know, we're past super majorities in Sacramento in the Senate and the Assembly. So the mix of so-called progressives to moderates is very, very important. There are a lot of races right now in this election in the legislature where that could, the balance could shift. Couple more moderates, couple more progressives. That's something we're watching. Frankly, a lot of the bills that we have to end up stopping for the county and for the valley, those moderate members in the majority party end up being very, very important. And so again, something we're watching very closely. And then obviously, there are a couple pretty interesting races here in the valley in terms of state legislative seats. Also on the ballot is obviously Proposition 1. I've gotten to the point where I talk, I like to talk about, it could pass, it could fail. In December, the last time I was here, multiple polls had it in the high 60s, and it looked like it was virtually a slam dunk. The latest poll, a reputable poll that anybody has done that I'm aware, was done by the folks who do polling at the University of Berkeley, and it showed Proposition 1 in the high 50s. There is a no campaign. It's been a sort of small, scrappy campaign, if you will, but we'll see. What I really want to highlight for you is, if it passes, I think we really have our arms around what that looks like, right? Counties do now. There'd be some things that might be good for counties, there'd be some other things. Prevention and early intervention and Prop 63, for example, that's going to need to be repaired. If it fails, I just don't want anybody to be surprised if the governor asks the legislature to get back to work and potentially re-revamp Proposition 63, especially if the vote is close. There are a lot of things that can be done to alter Proposition 63 in the legislature, right, with a supermajority vote. And so I just don't know that we are done. The voters may say yes, obviously, that's one thing. Voters may say no. I just don't want to leave here today, or I want to leave here today. Everybody understanding that that might just lead to another kind of conversation about Prop 63. So moving on, in terms of other bonds, I think if Proposition 1 passes, it includes obviously a $6.4 billion bond. One of the platform items that Sam described, that is part of Proposition 1, a $1.5 billion direct allocation to counties and cities. So I want to make sure the board and the public are aware of that. And again, if we have to go back to it, not sure how that would be reconstituted. But if Prop 1 passes, we think that the governor and legislative leadership will be open to putting on the November ballot, at a minimum, a schools, construction, and renovation bond, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8, $9, $10 billion. The question still remains, and Speaker Rivas, new Speaker Rivas recently said, he basically said, this is how much we would put on the ballot, $16 to $17 billion, right? But housing is still out there, and water and natural resources are still out there. And I just think the board and the public should expect pretty much a battle royale between housing and water and natural resources because schools, a school bond will be in that $16, $17 billion mix. It's just, what else? And I don't think you're going to see a $4 billion water bond and a $4 billion housing bond. And so what they ultimately do is maybe is say one of them goes on the '24 ballot and the other one goes on the '26 ballot, right? But I still think we're going to see two of those three bonds, as it is today. On the budget, some of you might have been wondering, when's it going to get around to talking about the budget? I don't know what we would really talk about, except it's gotten worse in, what, two months since I presented to you last? The January numbers, just to, for the public's benefit especially, were under estimates that were included in last year's state budget by $5 billion. In one month, January, the revenue was $5 billion below estimates. We have a pretty serious, ongoing, current-year budget problem. What happens ultimately, we talked about a lot of different scenarios last time, I think it's just increasingly possible that the governor's going to say, let's use all the reserves, especially within Proposition 98 for schools. The January 10 proposal is to use half of what's in the reserves for the schools. It's about $9 or $10 billion, so half of that is $4.5 billion. I think ultimately, one of the things they're going to have to do for the schools this summer is to utilize all the reserve money that's in Proposition 98. So we'll see. On bills, almost done. 2,000-plus new bills. One of the things about the budget deficit is it has constrained legislative interest in introducing bills. Most bills cost money, you know, even a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, I think it's sunk, it has sunk into some extent with the legislature. Maybe don't introduce that last two or three bills you were going to that were aspirational, that were going to cost a lot of money. So we do have fewer bills than we typically would have in the second year of a two-year cycle. Committees start in earnest next week. Hearing bills, policy committees of the legislature, we're ready for that. In the Senate, also a change there since I presented to you, Senator McGuire, we said he was going to be sworn in. He was sworn in. Importantly for Fresno County and its residents, Senator Caballero got a promotion. There's no other way to put it. She's now the chairwoman of the Senate Appropriations Committee. Incredibly powerful, incredibly important, and definitely a part of the new Pro Tem, Mike McGuire's leadership team. On the platform, and then I'm happy to take questions or comments from the board members, we talked about, Sam also talked about retail theft. I think we're going to see some changes in the legislature this year. The Senate has a package, the Assembly has a package. The initiative that would alter Proposition 47 continues to successfully gather signatures. It is being taken more and more seriously by the legislature. They know that they have to act. I can't tell you right now what exactly they will do, but they know that they have to act. And I think the folks that are behind that initiative right now are feeling pretty good about their chances, not only in qualifying signatures but being on the November ballot. And I'm not sure they're going to want to cut a deal with the legislature. And so that's going to be really interesting to watch in May and June, what comes together on retail theft, Proposition 47 reform, et cetera. There's also a change in the platform with respect to organic waste. That's another area where I think we're going to see a lot of legislation this year. The director of CalRecycle recently stepped down. SB 1383 was sort of her brainchild, and she was 100% behind it. We're going to get a new director. We think the administration may soften up a little bit in terms of exemptions for the more rural, more mountainous parts of California. Obviously, some of those are in Fresno County, so we're hopeful about that as well. Tried to hit as many things I could, Mr. Chairman, as fast as I could. Happy to take questions.
Excellent. Board members, I would like to hear from you. We'll start with Buddy.
You know, both of us are of age, and we've seen, we've seen these cycles. I didn't say the, I didn't say this old word, but it's amazing that the state, when they have $100 billion surplus, these drunken sailors in the Senate and the Assembly just blow the money on all their little projects. And then when there's a downturn, we always know there's a downturn, we immediately have nowhere near the reserves that we need to bandy over and to make it back to when revenues come back up. But it's just amazing, you know, how that happens. And I think you've hit the Prop 47 initiative, you know, to change it, you hit that square on the head, and that's why you're our lobbyist.
Appreciate that.
Because you're always, you always see out there and see this very well. But there is going to be a big push from the legislature trying to back that off by banding over, you know, the fallacies of Prop 47. So I think, you know, we're going to have to see how that plays out. And I think it'll even, I actually had a long conversation with Graham Canhouse last night, who runs CSAC, and I said, that initiative could be something that blow CSAC up because you've got a, and most of them sit on the executive committee, that are disciples of this lunatic governor we have. And they'll do anything he tells them to. But what that'll do is make the valley counties look at it and say, hey, wait a minute. If you take a position one way or then another, you're going to blow this organization up. So anyway, that's all the good news I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Hey, Paul, where are some areas that Fresno County needs to be concerned about? Is whether the Sacramento's going to clawback money or decrease in allocations for mandated services? So what are some things that we need to be watching?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. To the chair, I didn't mention earmarks earlier, earmarks from last year. Our staff has been sort of running to ground the odds of a lot of earmarks that are supposed to go to the area actually happening, right? Because there was a pause that was placed on those. We've gone pat, we've gone, so far into the year, it seems more and more likely, we're hopeful, right, that the county, other local governments in the region are going to actually get the earmarks that were in last year's budget. But I got to say a grain of salt with that. The biggest one, obviously, for downtown, the governor's proposed not to claw it back, but to allocate the money in future years, basically a delay on the allocation of those funds. And so even on that really, really big one, folks are still hopeful. I think the areas of concern, you start with health, you start with behavioral health, you start with social services. Those are typically the programs that's where the money is, as they say. And so if you're going to try to get savings, those are the areas that typically get eyed first. You may see some tug and pull between the governor and the legislature. Governor may propose something, the legislature may resist it. Goes back to utilizing the reserves. And also, I just want to remind the board and the public, in the past, one of the things we've done is we've had trigger, trigger cuts. And I have to go like this, because not everybody, that's not an expression I think everybody's using at home around the dining table. But what that is, when we, when that happens in Sacramento is, it's not necessarily a cut. It's a cut if, say halfway through the fiscal year, the state's fiscal situation doesn't improve enough, and so additional cuts are necessary. And so the cuts go on the table, but they don't necessarily happen in the summer. And I think that's one of the budget maneuvers that maybe we should all expect, where it's the legislature and the governor saying, we don't really want to make these cuts, but if things continue to deteriorate, then clearly we need to do something. So those areas, unfortunately, Supervisor, are the ones that I think are at the top of the list, you know, they will wait. I have to say it this way, especially in an election year, to touch anything that's public safety-related.
Sure.
They will wait, and that'll be relatively lower down on the list, but yeah.
Okay. And that makes sense. You know, Buddy talked about them blowing through their reserve, and this body's done a great job building our reserve. And I'd hate to see us have to use our reserve because of Sacramento's problems that they've created for the rest of us. I do have another question. You mentioned a housing bond. You know, out on the campaign trail, I'm getting hammered all the time with questions about housing. Is there anybody in Sacramento doing anything creative that we can have some hope for? I mean, just doing a bond, but doing some of the same old stuff and just throwing money at it, to me, is not really an answer. Is there anybody up there looking at housing creatively?
Yeah. I think in addition to the possibility of a housing bond, we will, we are already seeing, and we will continue to see, a lot of, I'll say fairly aggressive proposals to make building housing easier in the state of California. Absolutely. And not just, not just single-family housing, but, you know, housing for the homeless and just kind of running the gamut. You're going to see some really, really aggressive. There's one bill that the coastal counties are, well, it depends on the county, but they're all up in arms about. There's a bill that would say, really revise what you can do to build housing in the coastal zone. And in California, that's a pretty, I think by any measure, that's a pretty aggressive proposal. But just to give you an example, and to give the public an example of what's out there right now, yeah, we're definitely going to see, in addition, more instances where, for example, SEQA is taken out of the equation to assist in the construction of housing.
That'd be something.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're going to see more legislation on that.
All right. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Members to my right, I've got a couple of quick questions then. And if anybody thinks of anything, just turn your light on, let me know. So this is, just kind of rolling the dice, I want you to give me your best guess, but how high does the budget deficit go? LAO said $72 billion a few weeks ago. Governor said, no, 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 it's, you know, 38. Are we, in April, are we going to have windfall capital gains, windfall in personal income taxes, since that's what the state really relies on? What is your crystal ball telling you?
I was thinking, I was going to see if I could borrow county counsel to have my lawyer answer for me, but, 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 yeah, it's always a fun question in the mic. So we talked a lot about the various markets last time I was here, and lo and behold, the Nasdaq actually got to another historic high, not by a lot, but that was a big deal. The Dow, I think we all know what's been going on there. But there is no substitute for the facts, which I'll say again, for the month of January, coming out of the holidays, the state of California was $5 billion below projections for one month. Now, what I didn't say earlier is, one of the things that's going on in the budget is, it appears that expenditure projections were also high. And we're not spending as much money right now in the state of California as was projected. And so no one's writing about that, but that is also happening. How about this, Mr. Chairman? You may have a follow-up. I don't want anybody to be shocked later this summer when the legislative analyst sticks to his guns, their guns, and says, the deficit is $73 billion. The governor says, you know what, Department of Finance, we still think it's $63 billion or $58 billion. We're off by 10 or 15 billion. The thing I don't want anybody to be surprised about is that the legislature ignores their own legislative analysts and warmly embraces the governor's revenue estimates instead, right? So there's the actual deficit, and then there's, I'll put it this way, this is fun, really fun to do in a public meeting, there's the number the legislature may use to craft the '24, '25 state budget, right?
Since the state cannot deficit spend and it has to pass a balanced budget, I guess the Constitution doesn't point to that the legislature has to use actual numbers?
They have to use actual numbers, but the budget is built on projected numbers.
Fair enough. And then I could beat that point all day long, but a couple other quick questions. The reserves, we've got about $27 billion in reserves, or what's that number? I forget.
We have, if you include the Prop 98 reserves, it's just shy of $30 billion, all in. Yeah. And one other thing, may I?
Yeah.
To previous comment, I didn't mention the state of the state. I think the governor's still targeting Monday, March 18th. And one of the things, I won't be surprised in that state of the state if the governor says he wants the legislature to raise the constitutional limit for money that can be put into the reserves. The governor's already said it to the press. The governor's already said it to the press, and I think he wants the legislature to act on that. So that down the road, there is more money that can be set aside by the state of California.
But the key word is when the money comes in.
When the money, yeah.
So.
Hope I live that long.
Yeah.
Medi-Cal costs to California, Medi-Cal. So Medi-Cal has been expanded to include more and more persons. And it seems like more citizens and non-citizens in the state are using Medi-Cal. What kind of a bill is that going to place on the state budget? Have there been projections? And is it in line with what the state has set aside?
So the thing to watch, some of those things are happening, maybe not, not as much as some folks might think right now. That could change over time. But the thing to watch on Medi-Cal, excuse me, is off and on in California for the last 20 years, we've had what is called a managed care organization tax, an MCO tax. And it's a tax in the sense that it's a tax on the health plans in California, who to some degree pass them along to the payers, right, and consumers. The governor has a proposal to increase that, okay? The governor is, has been proposing that that would go for things such as increasing physician rates. Especially for the specialties where, in the valley, there's fewer doctors than you would like to see, right? Fewer psychiatrists, for example. The governor has been proposing to increase rates for certain medical specialties. What appears to be taking shape right now is it would be legal to take three or four or five or $6 billion in MCO tax revenues, and to say, we're going to use that in the short term to help pay for Medi-Cal. And if you ask your medical community here locally, they would tell you, your local medical society, they would tell you that that's a thing that they're very concerned about right now. And the money going to Medi-Cal is not necessarily a bad thing. It's just the premise over the last 18 months has been, we're going to help hospitals, we're going to help some of these specialties, and get certain types of doctors more throughout the state of California. And so that's really the thing to watch on Medi-Cal, Mr. Chairman, is the MCO tax. How high, how high does the governor ultimately request, or the legislature? How high do they want it to go? And I do, I will put it, for the time being, where do they want to invest the proceeds of that tax?
So I will say in doing that, what it does is it makes private insurance all that much more expensive, because Medi-Cal reimburses at set rates. So in effect, the state could bankrupt private insurers, or at least entities that have private insurance. They wouldn't be able to afford to pay it anymore.
Everybody that buys insurance from plans will pay more. So that has implications for all the people paying into the health plans in California, including this county.
It's good to be aware of some of these things, Buddy.
Well, that's just how socialism works. You have to steal from somebody to give it to somebody else.
You're on fire today.
I mean, there's no other way of putting it, that's how it works.
Last question. Is the legislature or governor making any comments or indicating that they plan on delaying reimbursements to counties or cities? And if that is happening, please let us know, because we just recognized the Department of Social Services an hour ago. I can tell you that their department alone is about roughly a $2 billion enterprise, including the pass-through funds that we have. And if the state at some point says, we're not going to be able to pay you counties, figure out how to pay that on your own, we don't have that kind of money. And there are tens of thousands of people that are reliant on that. But if the state's signaling, I think we need to be prepared to communicate to the public very quickly what that would mean.
Before I answer that question, Mr. Chairman, and you excuse me, I forgot, no, no, I forgot earlier. I want to give staff props for this platform. This is officially one of the most succinct, on-point county platforms that exists, period. And just Samantha and Finae have done a phenomenal job on it, I just want to hats off to them.
So what I hear you saying is of the 58 counties in California, Fresno County's the best, is that what you said?
I said, one of the most, I believe, right? We all heard that, one of the most, yeah. So to answer your question, we already are getting reports of sort of slow-rolling, if you will, of the state reimbursing, not just counties, paying, because there are private sector interests who get paid by the state, starting to slow-roll payments. I'm going to say across the board, right? So you used to get paid in 60 days, you just got paid in 90. You used to get paid in 90, and you know, and this is starting to build, it absolutely is building. Almost every single downturn in California's finances that I've witnessed have seen, has also witnessed a slow-rolling of payments. It's an unfortunate consequence. Hopefully, right now, the state keeps talking about the cash availability that it has, somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 100 million dollars, a billion, I should say. It's in reserve accounts in various state pots, right? Not just the governor, the state controller starts talking about, or keeps talking about the liquidity that's out there. Hopefully, that liquidity will limit, right, the slow-rolling of payments. And it won't get to the extent that it did, if you guys can remember, the $42 billion deficit, where members of the valley had to help solve that budget problem. Counties were getting IOUs, private sector companies were getting IOUs, private company, private sector companies were on the verge of going bankrupt, because they weren't getting their money from the state. So I think we're a long ways away, hopefully, from anything like that. But it is something that happens at every downturn, and we are starting to see it.
See, that's how you, because you have to work with real money. That's what you end up doing, you just pay everybody late. Or don't, or pretend to pay them, you give them a voucher that will be good someday. I want to comment on what a great job Sam Buck has done. I mean, Sam came into this doing ledge work with, you hadn't really done it before. And I think she's, she's doing an Olympic-sized swimming pool and winning every race.
Thank you Supervisor, I appreciate it. I couldn't do it without Finae Nye, he's an awesome analyst, I really appreciate all of his support in helping this.
Steve?
Yeah. Paul, I have one last question I just thought of. Any impact of the budget on the High-Speed Rail project?
No, through the chair, certainly not yet, not yet. And the project, you know, LA to Vegas is proceeding at pace and, no, no slowdown.
I get the LA to Vegas one, but you know, the one that we're most interested in, the one that's pouring through Fresno County, is the work going to continue?
The one thing, if I may, another thing to look for this summer is a potential redo and reauthorization of the state's cap-and-trade program. Currently, there is a continuous, some things are continuously appropriated in that program, some things are not. One of the things that has a continuous appropriation, and just for the public's benefit, that sort of thing of it is being on autopilot. The legislature doesn't have to approve it annually, right? One of the things that has a continuous appropriation within cap-and-trade is high-speed rail. I see the governor defending that.
All right, so it's not going to ground to a halt and we're going to get stuck?
No, I'm not picking that up at all, Supervisor.
Thank you.
All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back. We have a motion to approve by Buddy Mendez, is there a second? We have a second by Steve Brandow, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, passes unanimously.
We now move to item number six. Sitting as Fresno County Board of Supervisors, conduct a public hearing on annual water conservation report and adopt resolutions declaring water conservation stages from April 1st, 2024, March 31st, 2025, and impose corresponding regulations within County Service Area Number 1, 5, 10, 10A, 14, 23, 30, 32, 34, Zones A, C, D, F, and G, 34B, 39AB, 43W, 44C, 44D, 47, 49, under Fresno County Ordinance Code Chapter 1401. And sitting as the Board of Directors of Water Works Districts Numbers 37, 38, 40, 41W and 42, conduct a public hearing on water conservation report and adopt resolutions declaring water conservation stages from April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025, and impose corresponding regulations within Water Works Districts Numbers 37, 38, 40, 41W and 42 under Fresno County Ordinance Code Chapter 14-01.
Thank you Bernice. Staff, please, if you can present us with your information.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Elena Cotta with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The item before you today is a public hearing for the 2024-2025 Annual Water Conservation Report, in accordance with Fresno County Ordinance Code Chapter 14.01, titled Water Conservation. The report makes recommendations for 21 county-operated water systems for the 24 water year, which starts April 1st, 2024, and ends March 31st of 2025. The report recommends the implementation of a water conservation stage for all districts in the 2024-2025 water year. As detailed in the report, CSA's 30, 32, 39AB and 49 are being recommended for a water conservation stage higher than Stage 1, due to the restrictions imposed by their water providing agencies. Staff is also recommending Stage 4 water conservation regulations for Water Works District 40, Shaver Springs, due to groundwater capacity issues discussed in the water report. All remaining districts are recommended to be placed on Stage 1 water conservation regulations based upon the water, State Water Resources Control Board adopting emergency regulations in 2022 that most closely align with Stage 1 water conservation regulations. That concludes my presentation, and I am available if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff? This is obviously applying to districts throughout the entire county and many of our particular districts in Fresno County. So seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board. We have a motion by Supervisor Mendez for staff's recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We now move to item number seven. Under Public Works and Planning, consider appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of unclassified conditional use permit Number 3769, proposing to allow an unmanned freestanding 80-foot-tall monopine-style, co-locatable wireless telecommunications facility on a 8.58 acre parcel within the RE Zone District.
Staff, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm David Randall with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes before your board on appeal of the Planning Commission's approval, 5 to 2 with 1 absence and 1 vacancy at its November 12th public hearing. The proposal would allow construction of an 80-foot-tall monopine-style, co-locatable wireless telecommunications facility located on the southwest corner of Nares and South Pico Avenue within the unincorporated community of Leighton. The application was first served by the Planning Commission on October 12th, but was continued to the 16th to allow the applicant to hold the community meeting on November 12th to discuss the item. An appeal was filed on December 1st of the Planning Commission's approval by an area resident. The appeal asserts the tower will degrade the character of the community. A more thorough environmental analysis is needed to be done, noting the tower's proximity to an oak woodland, residential area, and nearby schools, and that the applicant failed to prove that a genuine need exists for the tower. Staff would make one note of clarification. Then on page 9 of Exhibit 8 of Attachment B, the initial study section of the hazardous waste incorrectly stated the project would not be using a backup generator. This modification, which I'll put on the overhead, does not impact the environmental document that the backup generator requires. Because the backup generator does require permitting through the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. They must meet certain specific emission criteria, and the generator would not be used except for emergency purposes. So the backup generator does not cause any significant impact to the, that would require mitigation or change the outcome of the environmental document. If your board chooses to deny the appeal and uphold the commission's approval, it would be appropriate to make the recommended motion as outlined in the staff agenda item, or the board's agenda item. And staff would recommend inclusion of the indemnification condition as noted in the agenda item. If your board is unable to make the required findings for granting the approval of the conditional use permit, it would be appropriate to make a motion stating the reasons of findings cannot be made and uphold the appeal overturning the commission's approval. Staff is prepared with a PowerPoint presentation if your board would prefer. We do have the site plans and the elevations available at any time if you so desire. That concludes my brief summary.
And with that, before we get to any additional comments that board members may have, since this is an appeal hearing, I need to, it's important for all of us to communicate to the audience now if we've had any ex parte communications with individuals either in support or opposition to this particular item. I have not, but just wanted to open that up.
Yeah, I talked to Verizon.
Okay. Any other? All right, perfect, so that's out there on the record. And with that, any additional comments or questions that we have for staff about this item? All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name's Rosemary Chan. My address?
You don't need to, I, yes, just your name's fine.
Okay. I'm a lifelong resident of Leighton. I grew up on those streets. My father was born on that street. He grew up there. My grandfather was born there, he grew up there. My great-grandparents, you might be surprised because, right? I'm not a migrant. My great-grandparents settled in Leighton at that spot in the early 1900s. So why I keep pushing for this, that place is dear to me. I'm not going to go anywhere, I'm 70 years old. I thought it was safe in Leighton, honestly, from all this intrusion, from technology, blah, blah, blah. And a lot of people do. It's a sanctuary. It's not just a sanctuary for people, but, you won't believe me, but it is a sanctuary for a little bit of wildlife. Nobody's going to agree that a tower there will damage the bird life, et cetera, or the health, I know. FCC doesn't allow you to consider the health effects that might be possible, I know that. But I'd like you to consider that it's very well-known, easy to find out, easy to do research, that there are a lot of studies, that there are a lot of people saying that this happens to them when they're exposed to a close proximity. So people know, and they are concerned, and they're worried, and they don't want to be living underneath a cell tower. So just the well-being. Even if you say, there's no evidence, there's no proof that any damage can be done. Fact is that there's a lot of word out there that damage could be done. So when your kid comes home now from school, because they're close to the schools, was maybe now they're feeling fatigue, or a headache, or nausea, or bloody noses, because it's out there that that could happen to kids playing under a cell tower. But it's not proven. Now we've got this worry, well, is it the cell tower? Or maybe me, I'm going to have tinnitus or whatever, maybe it's not the cell tower. But now I've got that concern. My well-being is not going to be intact, living, I'm going to be under 300 feet from the cell tower. That's where I live at. It's not on Nares and Pico, it's on Nares and Castro Street, in spite of what the documents say.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
I'm done, okay. Well, I feel like everybody feels we're just kind of powerless. It's Verizon, multi-billion dollar. And even if you, I'm not done, because this is not for the well-being of the community, it's for the well-being of Verizon. They've got a lot of money involved. It's for the well-being, if you read my statement, the people who are leasing the land to Verizon. It's not for the well-being of the community, it's not going to serve the community, we don't want them, we don't need them. We have AT&amp;T, we have Comcast, nobody has problems with connectivity.
A quick question I do have, are you the appellant? Are you the one who paid? appellant, do any board members have any questions, clarifying questions for the appellant? We do appreciate you bringing this item forward. Are there any additional salient points that you didn't have an opportunity to make that you would like to share with this board before we hear from the rest of the audience on this particular item?
Salient points?
Yeah, any other points that you believe are merit that you haven't had an opportunity to make in regards to this item?
Well, I submitted all the items. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the appeal and how I showed where there's so much space around, and why are they putting it in a residential area when we're surrounded by land? It's a small town. We don't need two cell towers. I mean, did you have a chance to read my statement, to look at the documentation? And, well, again, we've been betrayed by the Lions Club, who kept it secret from the community since 2019. We only learned about it a few days before it came to the Planning Commission meeting on October 7th. Or we may have been able to do something else, maybe. But it's not the community that wants it. It's the Leighton Lions Club and Verizon. I'm sure Verizon has plenty of good reason for putting it there. It's probably a lot less effort than trying to establish something outside where they don't have to build roads or put electrical up, and et cetera, et cetera. It's going to change it for everyone, for everyone. We have a -- it's a small, little town, and we like it that way. We thought we were flying under the radar, that we weren't going to be bothered by the world outside. It's safe, kids play on the street, for goodness sake. I mean, people, we don't have sidewalks. Why would we want another cell tower? We don't want sidewalks. We've been invited to have sidewalks. If you can understand the mentality, we love our little rural town, and we like it that way, and we want it to stay that way. But again, more than 50% rentals. A lot of people don't feel they have the power. I've been told, why are you doing this? You're not going to change their minds. They're going to do what they want to do. It's going to be there. But I can't give up, because as I said, my family has a long history in that town, and I love that town.
Thank you.
I don't know what else I can say.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else wishing to comment? Please.
Also, they didn't notify the public. Oh, hello, good morning. They didn't notify the public. No one really knew. I know that they don't have support from any organizations. They didn't -- they were planning this for years, and, you know, we just found out. And they rushed for the permits to try to get the permits approved. I know people don't use, very traditional people there, they don't use emails, they didn't get any notifications. My landlord, he said he didn't know anything about it. He speaks only Spanish. No one went out there. We had rodeo events. They could have reached out to people. They didn't do that. We had football games, and they didn't reach out to anyone. So no one really knew about the tower that they're trying to put there. Also, we have a lot of children in Leighton who have medical conditions. What is this tower with radiation going to make things worse? It's probably going to cost the county money, you know, for medical doctor visits. You know, we don't want the tower there. No one asked them, no one asked them for the tower. They need to stay away from Leighton. No one asked them for the tower there. There's no one supporting them. Where's the Leighton FFA? Where's the school district? No one is supporting them. We have the river there, we have oak trees, we have owls there at night. We don't need the tower there. We fear our health. That's pretty much it. And I support what she -- everything she said. Leighton's a beautiful community. We don't need towers there with radiation. We care for our children and for our health. There's people fighting cancer there. What is -- that's not going to do any better. And I hope that you guys are in support of the people instead of money over here, organizations or people over here, corporations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning. Dan Barcellos, I'm with the Leighton Lions Club as a Board of Directors. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Leighton Lions Club did everything they could within their own being to take care of, making sure the citizens were notified. There was a notice that was sent out in the water bill for everybody to let them know of the public meeting that was taking place at our Lions Club Hall. It was also posted on our social media, and Verizon also had made notice so that it was open to the public so they could let their concerns be heard on November 14th, where a slideshow was presented to them. And they were also speaking about the concerns of cancer and what that might do. It was vetted with information from the Verizon towers. Our fire department has also stated that they're having to look at infrastructure as well for getting a new radio tower put up at that portion of the county. The Leighton Unified School District reached out to the Lions Club and Verizon, saying that their students needed help for education with getting wireless broadband put in for educational purposes when COVID and everything was going on and still currently, so it would increase the service for them in that area. The Lions Club is only going to get $6,000 a year for that tower at that location, and that money goes right back into the community, where we helped support it this last week with the Catholic Church and helping fund their pancake breakfasts and other things within the community, such as FFA, our school events. And so we donate, we gain no money whatsoever. Lions Club International is the largest service organization in the nation, and it provides things for catastrophes and everything else. So when people say that the Lions Club's going to actually benefit from that, the $6,000 actually benefits the community of Leighton, and that's where our money goes right back to. And so I think we would be willing to have another meeting if need be, and meet with you guys and reconvene with Verizon to get these things settled, so we can do it for the betterment of the community. Also, maybe if the sheriff's office or somebody was needing to add service down to that end of the area, the fire department was saying that they lose radio reception when they're down in Kingston and Leighton Park. And so maybe Verizon would be willing to allow the county to put stuff up on that tower that would help with public safety as far as making another repeater that would help the sheriff's office or the fire department if they're having radio receptions. And it would cut down costs for the county as well, because that tower would already be out there, and there wouldn't have to be any infrastructure costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to -- oh, if --
Can I just rebut what he just said?
Since you're the appellant, you can, but you'll have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal since you are the appellant. So please come forward. And since I don't see any additional speakers, new speakers, you will be the last speaker with your rebuttal.
Well, I've tried to remember everything, but he said that they did everything that they could. The timeline is from 2019. The only time that they tried to include the community was when the Planning Commission required them to hold a community outreach event after the October 7th time. They didn't do it on their own. Neither did Verizon. The Planning Commission required them to hold this outreach meeting to inform the community before they could come back for the next meeting, which we were given a delay for, I can't remember what the word is. So it wasn't their own efforts that brought this meeting in. The Planning Commission also asked them to bring a letter of support from the Board of Directors of the Lions Club. They didn't provide that. The Planning Commission also asked them to write a letter of support from the school board. The school board, and he's also saying, I already indicated that, but he's saying that the school board approached Verizon, and you can contact the school board, you can contact the schools. They won't give me a letter because they say that it'll look like I'm supporting them, and they need to maintain a neutral stance. But if you require them to explain to you or whatever, to verify what I'm saying and what I've said there, they are willing. I've spoken to the superintendent, she's willing to provide a letter to you to the effect that they are not involved with this, and they will not be involved with it. They have a contract with Comcast, they've had a longstanding contract with Comcast, and they're not going to change it. So that's untrue that the schools approach Verizon and that they're trying to do a favor for the schools. It's not true, and it's provable. The schools will back me up. Also, the IT tech will also back me up. The IT tech, he also mentioned again Hardwick, which is also not true. The IT tech, for nine years in Leighton, says he never heard of any problems with any of his students during COVID. They all had a little laptop, they all took home, they had hotspots, and there were no issues. The IT tech will testify to that, so that is also not true. That is not why they're coming to Leighton. I know they had them, I had kids at my home with their little computers that I was taking care of during the lockdown, during COVID. So there were no issues. That's something that's not true. As far as going back to the community, I've been there all my life. I was 10 years old when the Leighton Lions Club came. They hold a rodeo every year, yay, and a parade. They hold dances, fundraisers. Well, whatever happens to that money, we don't see it in Leighton. I've asked my neighbor across the street, and in her words, I said, have you ever noticed that they've done anything for Leighton? What did the rodeo, what did the Lions Club do for you? And she's older than me, she's been there a long time too, and she said, not a damn thing, but I don't care. That's been our position all this time. We don't care what they do with the money. They're the Lions Club. We didn't know that they're a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt charitable organization. We didn't know that. Part of their statement on their IRS forms, which are available to everybody, is that they want to foster a good relationship with the community. Well, to tell you the truth, we don't know them. We don't know what they do with the money.
And ma'am, is there any other points that you want to make specific to rebut what was stated specifically about the tower?
Well, he's saying that money's for the community. We don't want it. We want our peace of mind. We want our safe space in town. If he's doing that for the community, he's wrong. If he's saying that Verizon can help Hardwick out by putting some signal there, you won't know, you won't be familiar. We asked them, why don't you place the tower at that spot? Oh, no, sorry, we can't do that because it won't help the community.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you for making those points. And I think we do have another speaker. I think it might actually, yeah, please step forward and --
I'm a representative with Verizon, so if I can't speak, I do have a short presentation. I'm not sure what's --
You've got three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Do you have my presentation loaded? I will just speak to some points that were brought up. So the school district supervisor, Victor Villar, did reach out to Verizon years ago before who was in position now. So that is true that the school district did reach out to us, and we confirmed that with him. Three members of the school district were at our community meeting on November 12th, and they did state that they are not going to support or be, or not be in support. They will stay neutral, but they will support what the community needs and what the community wants. Leighton's Lions Club is for the community. They hold lots of events and support lots of fundraisers in the community. They work within the community who does want this tower. Thank you. This is the tower. It, speaking to the appeal points, it does blend in with the aesthetic. It's a monopine, it's surrounded by a cinder block wall. This is what you can see from the street, looking west and looking east. This is the coverage that's needed. The red indicates lack of dominant signal that compromises network performance. You can see on the right, there's a lot more green. That means that you're going to receive more reliable coverage. These are all the alternatives that we looked at, 24 different sites that we looked at that will not work, as it does not meet the radio frequency coverage objective. They are in the residential district. Landlords were unresponsive, or they do not meet the setbacks. Here's a map of every single alternative that we did look at. Our tower meets all the county requirements. It's camouflaged as a pine tree. It's consistent with the general plan. These are the notices that went out for the community meeting. So for the first Planning Commission, that is the Fresno County Planning Commission's responsibility to send out notices. Notices were sent. They are not required to be sent in Spanish per the code. Verizon did send out notices in English and in Spanish that you can see here for the community meeting that was requested by the Planning Commission in October. We held that on November 12th. We noticed to a 600-foot radius, not a 300-foot radius that the county did. And Leighton's Lions Club, you can see their letter there, was in English and in Spanish, sent that out to 475 members in their water utility board. The members from the school district also stated that they sent over 500 emails to parents within the school district to notify them of this community meeting. We had over 29 signatures at this community meeting to discuss. You can see here, here are the pictures. We had a radio frequency expert, we had materials of the site, and we had a two-hour conversation, and we had Spanish translators as well. The response to the appeal stating that this is in a residential zone, this is in a recreational zone, it's not next to a school. The impact on community and town character, this is stealth. It's a tree pole.
If you can wrap up, that would be great. So was that kind of the end of the presentation?
That is the end. It's just the response to the appeal points, and we did do what the Planning Commission asked of us, which was to reach out to the community, and so that it was very successful.
We're done.
All right. Excellent, excellent. We appreciate those comments.
Paul, I'll already make a quick 30-second comment outside, counsel. Just wanted to get on the record for the negative declaration for SEQA, that there is no light on top of the tree, that the square footage of the area is only 900 square feet, not the larger size shown in the NAG deck, and that it will be surrounded by a CMU wall, as indicated. Those are three issues we'd like to make sure you're aware of before you make your decision on the SEQA NAG deck. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public portion. We've heard from people in favor and against. We had an opportunity for the appellant to make a rebuttal, and we've also had statements from Verizon as well. So I think I followed proper procedure with this appeal hearing. Just want to confirm with counsel, county counsel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, we're going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board for additional comments that we may have, anything that needs to be clarified with staff. Now is your time. If there are no additional clarifying comments --
I've got a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
One, being a member of Lions Club, not that one, I'm a member of Riverdale Lions Club, and Riverdale's a separate deal. Lions Club does their deal. Riverdale has a rodeo association that puts on the rodeo. If you are, your club is part of International Lions, you are very, very regulated on how you get your money and how it gets distributed out. They actually audit you. That's not a, you know, you just don't do things whatever, any way you want, and they will de, they will pull the name Lions Club away from your organization if you don't follow those rules. I just want to state that, because I felt that this letter, and I'm just going to make this one point, when it started talking about the Lions Club was a little bit slanderous. And I'm just going to state that fact. And I don't know if anybody else on the board wants to speak or not.
If you're district, but --
Okay.
If it's slanderous, it's because --
We're done. We're done. We're done.
And I apologize, it's not meant to be slanderous.
Yeah. I'm going to, I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal in council. Do I have to make several motions, or can we include?
You can make one motion. You need to include all the action points for approval that staff provided, including the proviso that the agreement will contain an indemnification agreement, as stated in the staff report.
So it'd be the action items A, B, and C with an indemnification from Verizon. Is that sufficient?
That should be, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion or from any members? Second to that motion? I'll make the second to that motion so we can have some additional discussion if needed. Are there any additional clarifying comments that need to be made by board members? All right, then, we're going to do a roll call vote on this. I'm going to turn it back over to Bernice.
Sucrea Mendez?
Aye.
Chairman Magsig?
Aye.
Sucrea Brandal?
Yes.
Sucrea Pacheco?
No.
Sucrea Quintero?
Yes.
4-1, motion carries with Sucrea Pacheco voting no. We now move to item number eight under Public Works and Planning. Consider appeal of Planning Commission's approval of unclassified conditional use permit number 3709 and various application number 4112, proposing to allow a pistachio processing facility, including irrigation of approximately 3,000 -- under Public Works and Planning. Consider appeal of Planning Commission's approval of unclassified conditional use permit number 3709 and various application number 4112 proposing to allow a pistachio processing facility, including irrigation of approximately 3,740 acres of agricultural land with processed water and waiver of height limitations for specific structures to permit 48 silos at 50 feet and two proposed taller buildings at 42.5 feet.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. David Randall again from Public Works and Planning. This item comes before your board on appeal of the Planning Commission's approval on a six to vote with one commissioner vagancy from its 20, January 21st, fifth hearing this year. The proposal would allow a pistachio processing facility, including the irrigation of 3,740 acres with the processed water from the plant and a waiver of the height requirement, height requirements on specific facilities or structures in the facility. The project is, is the plant, plant portion of the project is proposed on a 98 acre portion of a 316 acre parcel located on the northwest corner of West Muscat Avenue and South Newcomb Avenue, approximately 10 miles south of the city of Fireball. The 3,740 acres of agricultural land to be irrigated by the processed water from the proposed facility is located approximately two miles northeast of the project, of the plant site at its closest point to that acreage. An appeal was filed on January 29th, 2024 of the Planning Commission's approval. The appeal stated perceived deficiencies with the draft environmental impact report. The appellant did not attend the Planning Commission hearing, but previously provided a letter to staff, which was distributed to the Planning Commission. The appellant also recently sent a letter to your board indicating there will not be an attendance for the appeal here today. If your board chooses to deny the appeal and uphold the commission's approval, it would be appropriate to make the approval motion as outlined in the agenda item and staff would request the inclusion of an indemnification condition as noted in the agenda item. If your board is unable to make the required findings for granting approval of the conditional use permit and the permits, it would be appropriate to make a motion stating the reasons for the findings cannot be made and uphold the appeal overturning the commission's approval action. We're prepared with a power presentation if you so desire and of course, we have the site plan and elevations if you so wish to show you at any time. That concludes my summary.
And again, my comments that I made for the last item, I need to make for this one. If any board members here had any ex parte communications with people in support or opposition to the appeal, we need to make that known to the public now.
Mr. Chairman, this is in my district. I have had several meetings regarding this project. However, I have had no interaction with anyone since the Planning Commission denial to this point today.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from members? All right. Seeing none, we now are, we've heard from staff, of course, and any additional questions that we have for staff before I open it up to the public and get rolling with the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing so we can receive testimony. Is the appellant here, the person who made the appeal to our board, I know the staff read that the appellant may not be here, but I need to know for sure if the appellant is here to make comments to us. Noting for the record that the appellant is not here. At this time, I'd like to open it up to persons in favor of the appeal, persons in favor of the appeal. Anyone wishing to comment? All right. Seeing none, we're now going to move on to persons in opposition of the appeal. Anyone in opposition of the appeal here, here to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dirk Pushel and my business address is 923 VNS here in Fresno. Mr. Stephanopoulos is out of the country marketing his pistachios, but with me this, this morning is his son Spiro, who's actively involved in, in the, in the facility and the existing operation in Mendota. The Stephanopoulos family is a pioneer in the pistachio industry in Fresno County, having planted their first pistachios in Fresno County in 1972. As staff has mentioned to you that the Stephanopoulos family currently grows and harvests approximately 13,500 acres of pistachios in a seven square mile area. The proposed facility will literally be in the center of the Stephanopoulos Pistachio Orchard and will eliminate about 272,000 truck miles annually, eliminating a 25 mile plus or minus one-way trip to Fireball. In other words, about 11 times around the world will be savings in corresponding public, private, and environmental savings. There is a 84 day harvest season that really is the spike of truck trips, if you will. This facility will allow the family to produce and process their own pistachios, which has a variety of, of economic advantages to only Fresno County, but also to the Stephanopoulos family. Your staff concludes that all of the four findings can be made. We concur with those findings, particularly with respect to the conditional use permit and the variance. I would like to bring to your attention the fact that as a good farmer, as a good environmentalist, the family will be recycling over 311 million gallons of water annually and discharging it as David said, on about 3,700 acres of their own property. The project underwent an extensive and rigorous air quality analysis. There was a commitment in the environmental impact report and the operational statement to use best practices to reduce air quality impacts to the extent possible. The issue with respect to the appeal is that they are not against the project itself, but they're demanding that we use electric dryers and they are not available in the industry. There was great care to utilize electric powered equipment in the extent that we can, and that was incorporated in the project. The applicant retained an air quality expert, Mr. Jason Ellard, who calculated the reduction in various emissions saved by reducing the project truck lengths, the 272,000 miles. There's a savings of about 328 metric tons of CO2 and 348 tons of criteria pollutants and greenhouse gas emissions annually.
And Bernice, was that five minutes by any chance?
Yeah.
So I tell you what, Dirk, we're going to give you an extra minute or two if you can wrap up. And then I think we might have some representatives up here who may have some questions for.
Understood. There was an exhaustive analysis. We are consistent with the California Air Resources Board. Noise was not an issue. We'll also be recycling 49.5% of the pistachios. We concur with the staff recommendation with respect to overriding considerations and the significant environmental advantages that are brought to Fresno County and the communities associated with this project. There were two articles that were provided in the record and we ask that your board respectfully deny the appeal as there is no practical alternative exists to processing the pistachios by electricity and approve the project as recommended by your staff and certify the project EIR and select the project alternative as recommended by your staff and proposed by the applicant. Mr. Steph, the Stephanopoulos family will disappoint no one in their stewardship of the land or in the protection of the environment and will produce great pistachios to be sold all over the world. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them of me.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, we don't have any questions. As stated earlier, there is no opposition to this present. Dirk, I think you've done your, your job. We're, we're good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think what the applicant not being here today speaks volumes. This is from council outside of the county. They went through the planning commission. It was approved by the planning commission. Again, in my opinion, this is an unnecessary delay by an outside source that caused this company 30 days of a delay and doesn't have the courtesy to show up after filing the appeal. I think that speaks volumes and that's all that needs to be said. Like staff, I can make the required findings relating to the conditional use permit, variance, and environmental impact report as stated in our agenda item. And therefore I move to deny the appeal and approve the conditional use permit number 3709, variance number 4112, and adopt the resolution certifying the environmental impact report number 8077, including all conditions and mitigating measures.
I'm going to hold that motion just one second because I need to close the public hearing. So Dirk, thank you for the presentation. Are there, is there any additional comments from the public before I close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to thank county staff, Will Kettler and his staff, Chris Mata and David Randall. They worked really, really hard to get us here and we appreciate all their efforts.
Thank you, Dirk. And Richard, it is good to see you. Seeing no further public comment, we're going to close the public portion. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, was that second by Sucreza Brandal?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. We now move to item number nine, board of Sucreza committee reports and comments.
We are going to start with Supervisor Pacheco.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Quintaro?
None.
Supervisor Brandal?
None.
Supervisor Mendez? All right. I've got a couple. So some comments I'd generally like to make. So of course, today is election day. I want to encourage those individuals that are watching this video, probably with a delay to get out there and cast your ballots. We're witnessing a historic turnout to the low side. I think the last time we've seen turnout this low was about 2012, just if my memory serves me correctly. But, you know, having an opportunity to vote is something we take for granted in this country. I look at many other countries that don't have that privilege. It's something that we need to cherish, protect, educate ourselves on issues and then go out and make sure that we participate in, in the process of electing our leaders and deciding on measures of significance. So I also, to my colleagues up here, both Supervisor Brandal and Supervisor Quintaro, I appreciate both of you very much and wish you well today and, you know, look forward to, of course, seeing you both very soon. But this board of five, I think we've gotten a lot done when it comes to just infrastructure projects, how we debate many issues vigorously up here. But we, we treat ourselves differently than some of the other bodies that exist out there up and down the state. So I've come to respect that very much and cherish that too. So thank you. I want to congratulate four Clovis Unified wrestlers who are 2024 state champions. Rockland Zinkin of Buchanan High School, Nikade Zinkin of Clovis High, Isabella Marie Gonzalez of Clovis East High School, and Leilani Lemus of Clovis High. Again, wrestling state champions here in, in California. And Clovis schools and our area in general is known for producing some of the best wrestlers in the nation. And even those that didn't win state championships, I know we had many people here from Clovis schools that were in, in the top 10 in the nation. And I think Samantha Buck's son was there wrestling as well. And I don't know exactly where he placed. It might've been fourth in his, his category. But we appreciate that excellence and dedication that they make, not only at their schools, but representing our region at a state level. We are all very proud of their efforts. Also, I want to provide congratulations to all the wrestlers from Fresno County who wrestled in the state wrestling tournament, February 22nd through the 24th. So with that, make sure you get out there and cast your ballots. Oh, yes, Supervisor Mendez.
You know what I like about today? Tomorrow, we won't have to listen to political ads.
And if we are, somebody screwed up.
Yeah.
We now move to item number 10, board appointments.
Any appointments Supervisor Brandal, that's Supervisor Mendez?
Yeah, I've got one. It's reappointment. Kalenga Hiron, mosquito abatement district, reappoint Randall Glenn Ramsey to a new term.
All right. Supervisor Quintaro?
None. Thank you.
None.
Okay. None from Supervisor Pacheco. So anyone in the public wishing to comment on the one appointment that has been suggested, suggested by Supervisor Mendez? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
We now move to item number 11, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Anyone wish to comment on items not on the agenda? Please step forward, state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Brent Berdine and I'm here to inform and to invite all of you to attend an event being held in Clovis on March 29th. It's going to be the Vietnam Memorial Veterans Day event. It's March 29th at the Clovis Veterans Memorial District Building from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's going to be the 49th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. All Vietnam era veterans and families are welcome to attend. It's open to the general public. It's a free event. The ceremony will begin at 9:00, 9:00 AM. We've got guest speakers. We've got music. We have two award ceremonies. There'll be awards for memorial pins and quilts of honor. Be a free lunch provided for the veterans. We have photos, map displays. We also have various vendors, clubs, and other organizations providing services to veterans and their families. For more information, contact the Clovis Veterans Memorial District Building at 299-0471. And everybody's welcome. If you know of any veterans or spouses of or children, these events are really great opportunities for camaraderie and also to be into contact, put in contact with different social services. The city and the county will also have tables there as well. So everybody's welcome. I'll be putting flyers to your different staffs and offices too. So it's just so you don't forget.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Mary Helen Lopez and I came up here. I was just going to listen this time, but something happened. And I want to say congratulations to the opening of the sheriff's office too. I was there. It was really, really nice, very nice thing that you did. But I have a problem when somebody yells at somebody, and this is directed to Buddy, when he starts yelling at women. I think it's a shake your finger type of thing that he needs not to do. He's representing the public. We are the public. Shouldn't shut us down. Thank you.
She was at a war.
Hello, my name is Sean Berdine. As you previously noted, today is an election day and I use air quotes because of our current system of elections is actually more of an election season. But today is the day that we recognize as election day where the media will appoint a prospective winner that will not be officially declared until weeks down the line. Having said all that, and I've observed this process very thoroughly for the last few election cycles, last few years, including very thoroughly for the current one, I still hold on to the concerns I've expressed before, that this current system is incredibly complicated and overly reliant upon proprietary outside machinery that creates very expensive potential technical problems down the line that create massive bottlenecks in the system. And that is something I have been witnessing. I don't want to disparage anyone who works for the county. I think everyone that I have interacted with the county has been phenomenal, including Mr. Coos, all of his support staff, everyone. My concerns, once again, as I've expressed before, is with the system itself. You know, I think when you have a system this complicated with the amount of training that they have, there is bound to be mistakes. And that's what we've been witnessing. I do believe that, you know, increasing the training would help that. And I have talked to some of the, the leadership down at the warehouse on this and they've agreed that that's something that they want to work on as well. But I'm still concerned that even with increasing the training time, a system this complicated, there is so much for somebody to learn in such a short period of time that you're setting yourself up for guaranteed levels of failure. And yes, you have stopgaps in place, particularly at the current office, and I have confidence in them. But once again, you can't get through the machines. One of the things that's becoming increasingly concerning to me, as also was talked about earlier, is the finances. Now, these machines are incredibly expensive and they're expensive to maintain. When the county is finding themselves in difficult financial times and completely relying with, on election system that is using very expensive proprietary machines, that looks like a potential problem down the road. And so I just want to kind of plant that seed in, in the minds of the board and the county as, as we look down the road. Is this a system that is financially sustainable long-term or not? And I think that that's one of the, the major considerations this board should, should take when looking at these things. You know, I could go on and on and on, on all these things. I, I talked to Coos on occasion. I talked to the staff down there, you know, but I know I'm limited time. So just wanted to say that and once again, extend that invitation to come see it firsthand. I'll be there tonight, next few days. Plenty of wonderful staff down there to assist you as well. Please, and good luck in the reelection campaigns.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion and just state that I would, I appreciate you inviting the public to get involved in the process. Having poll watchers, election workers to watch the process, I think, is critical. Fresno County invites, you know, the public to be involved in that process. It's important. There's a lot of, I would say, there's a lot of misinformation, and there also is a lot of things, I think, that need to be scrutinized. And we live in a country where we have an opportunity to question everything, and I'm supportive of that. So to the extent that the county can be more transparent, I'm open, open to that. So really appreciate both of you being here. And with that, Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also just like to add, Paul, we had talked at this body about adding a person to the team over there in elections to scrutinize some of the potential problems that Supervisor Magsig just kind of alluded to. Where are we at on that? I know we're in the middle of an election, then we have a special election in two weeks. Kind of catch me up on where we're at on that.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. Paul Nerl, you're CAO, so James is working with us on an agenda item to come back to your board in April, and yes, he's been very busy, and I will tell your board, I've even today been receiving compliments about the good work our election team has been doing today. But to that end, he's coming back with an item that would add staff to do that very thing in April.
All right. We appreciate that. And Sean, I know that you had reached out to any of us who would like to look, go down and join you and kind of observe some things, and I've got some time later this week, and I would love to do that and see firsthand some of the things that you keep referencing. So I'll be in touch.
All right. With that, next item.
Don't see any public comment for closed session, so I would defer to county council on closed session items.
But just to be sure, any comments from the public on closed session items that we will be taking up? Seeing none? Do we have to, can we adjourn now, or is there anything we need to report out on?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements at a closed session, so if the board chooses, they may adjourn following closed session.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn following closed session? We have, we'll take Buddy's motion, second by Brandal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here today.